All right, how you doing? All right, greetings everyone. We'll start off with prayer. If we can all bow our heads. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you, God. We thank you for the ability to be here today. We thank you for another day of life. We thank you for all these precious people that are here in unity and coming to do the work for the city. Right now, I want to pray for the humility of the city. I want to pray for us to be humble and be able to connect, be able to talk about issues, and be able to connect as a united city here in Los Banos. I pray for our council members here. I pray for our city officials. I pray for our county workers. I pray for our first responders. I pray for our police officers, our firemen, and all the people that work in this city, Lord. We just ask right now, God, that you protect us, that you heal this land, that you strengthen the people here, that you provide information, innovation, production for the city, more jobs, better cost of living for homes, for people, for all people in this city. I just pray that we can connect here, that you will watch over this city, that you would be a plant seed here, God, that will grow, the agricultural, and every area, God, that we need. I just pray for other people in here that are going through any issues, struggling with any depressions, any other issues, mental health, God, that we need, that we provide the proper resources in this community to meet every need. And I pray that in the name of Jesus. Thank you. Amen.
Thank you. Chief, right now, you want to leave this in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, call the meeting to order at 6:01. If I have a roll call, please.
Begonia, Jones, Lewis, Yannis?
Here, we have a quorum. Item four, consideration of the approval of the agenda. Councilmember Jones?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Councilmember Lambert?
Second.
All right, all those in favor? Aye. Motion passes. Thank you. Let's move on to item five, public forum. Members of the public may address the city council members on any item of public interest that's within the jurisdiction of the city council. This includes agenda and non-agenda items. No action will be taken on non-agenda items. Speakers are limited to a five-minute presentation, and the detailed guidelines are posted on the city council chamber information table on the back. This time, I'd like to invite the public to come forward, and just a reminder to silence your cellphones, please.
Good evening, Mayor Yannis and council. Kristin Santos here, representing the office of Congressman John Duarte. The House recently passed the Consolidated Appropriations Act of 2024, which includes $26.34 million in funding at the congressman's request to meet critical constituent needs from building vital infrastructure to supporting local police departments. Congressman Duarte issued the following statement. "I'm pleased to join a bipartisan group of Republicans and Democrats that passed legislation to fund the federal government in fiscal year 2024 that not only cuts wasteful government spending by $9 billion while preserving critical programs, but also includes more than $26 million in funding in my request to support critical local infrastructure, law enforcement, roads, and water projects in our district." Locally, Congressman Duarte was proud to advocate for $5 million in community project funding for the Los Banas Creek Recharge and Recovery Project. Our office will be following up with a formal presentation shortly. The San Joaquin River Flood Control System has been impacted by subsidence originating in the El Nido and Red Top area located in Merced and Madera Counties. The subsidence has reduced flood flow capacities of the system while increasing flood risk for adjacent lands and facilities. In addition, the Los Banas Creek area suffers from multiple hazards that compound each other and ultimately increase the risk of damage to critical infrastructure. This funding for Los Banas Creek Recharge and Recovery Project includes construction of approximately 200 acres of recharge and storage ponds and seven recovery wells along Los Banas Creek between the California Aqueduct and the Central California Irrigation District outside canal. The project will receive flood flows from both the San Joaquin and Kings Rivers, together with surface water from Los Banas Creek, the San Joaquin River Exchange Contractors Water Authority, member agencies, San Luis Water District, CCID Maine and outside canals, or through exchange from other contractors. The Delta-Medota Canal and outside canal will be used to convey floodwater to be stored for later use, and water wells will be piped to the DMC and CCID outside canals to augment drought-impacted water supplies. As a family farmer himself, Congressman Duarte is extremely familiar with the importance of water resilience in the Central Valley. Critical water infrastructure projects, like the Los Banas Creek Recharge and Recovery Project, are instrumental to addressing the water needs of valley farmers and communities. I'd also like to take the opportunity to thank Commander Mike Hughes of the VFW and Commander Alan Cotta of the Legion for providing Congressman Duarte the opportunity to host a town hall meeting right here in Los Banas. So our Los Banas Town Hall is going to be Monday, March 25th, at 6:30 PM at the Veterans Memorial Hall, 615 East Street. He is an echo. Los Banas, California, zip code 93635. We have flyers on the back counter as well. And we're also going to have Spanish translation available for constituents who have trouble with English and need a Spanish translation. So that's an opportunity for constituents here in Los Banas to make the concerns heard with the congressman. We pride ourselves in having an incredibly accessible member and an accessible district office. And speaking of our district office, I'd like to introduce our newest addition to our congressional district office, who happens to also be a hometown boy from Los Banas. He's our new Madera and Fresno County Field Representative, Kyle Savage.
Thank you very much, guys. Hope you guys enjoyed the rest of your day and, you know, had a great day so far. As Kristin said, you know, I'm the newest member of Councilman Duarte's congressional group for the Field Representative of Madera in Fresno County. I've been in Los Banos since 2001 by the age of one years old. I used to remember where I graduated from. Pacheco used to be all grounds, just a bunch of dirt. Now it's a high school, and this town has turned into something magical. So I greatly appreciate the opportunity to be here and to be part of the team for Duarte's team. And thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for your time.
Mayor, councilpeople. My name is Ol Granio, and I'm a citizen of Los Banos. I'm also a lead pastor at Mercy Springs Church of the Nazarene. And last week, I was privileged to be able to offer the invitational prayer for the council meeting. During the meeting, something happened that seemed to be becoming a pattern for this council. Sadly, this is a lack of gracious and respectful communication. This is a problem because when a person doesn't know how to use their voice, they become a clinging gong that will either destroy any chance of productive communication or they're going to be removed from the table entirely. Now, the voters get to do the latter every couple of years, but in the meantime, I pray that all of you would consider your role and responsibility to that position. Councilwoman Lewis, I appreciate your desire to have the complexity of the city management to be explained to the citizens of Los Banos. Any endeavor, though, of this size, it's easy and understandable for the leadership to want to just get through the necessary motions, hoping, maybe even expecting, that the general public will just trust them. And you're very diligent to try to have all of these items unpacked so that we, as citizens, have the opportunity to see more clearly into how our city is being run. And that's a wonderful attribute. But I would encourage you to offer grace and assume the best of those who are actually in the trenches making these things happen. Please consider how it is that you speak when you question these items. You might ask yourself, are you actually inviting the representative leaders to help you explain this to the community? Or are you speaking down to them as if accusing them or questioning their ability? Because only one of these is going to create the teamwork that we need for Los Banos. And in one of those clarity-seeking moments, Councilwoman Lewis asked a direct and fair question of Mr. Pinheiro regarding the hiring of Finance Director Vanessa Portillo, to which he at first danced around nervously. At this point, Mr. Mayor, you did something that I've noticed you do many times. You came to the rescue of Mr. Pinheiro and interrupted Councilwoman Lewis. May I ask why that question is relevant, you asked? And then you continued to attack Councilwoman Lewis in order to defend Mr. Pinheiro. While it may not be your intention, when you do this, you misuse your voice as the mayor, and you lose credibility. Mr. Pinheiro has the highest authoritative job in this city. Every one of you works together to cast a vision for this city. But make no mistake, Mr. Pinheiro, as city manager, runs this city. And when you, Mr. Mayor, do not allow him to handle simple questions like those that Councilwoman Lewis asked, you let this entirety community know that you yourself don't even have confidence in his ability to handle difficult matters. We're into Mr. Pinheiro for $1.8 million along with his regular salary. Please, let him have the opportunity to show this community that he can handle the task. Because by jumping in, you demean his authority. If you want to defend your people, that's wonderful. That's an honorable attribute. But I pray you would intentionally exercise how you're doing this for individuals that make up Los Banos. I want to share an example where you could really show us that you're willing to go to bat for us. Yesterday, a PG&E employee disrespected one of our community members. Brenda Vidal had a PG&E box that she painted. Yesterday, she posted the following on one of the Los Banos Facebook pages. And I quote, "I painted a tree, flowers, a teeny rabbit holding a hot air balloon, a blue sky with white clouds on top, even an American flag. It was adorable. Today, I look out the window, and I see this guy from PG&E started to get a spray can and starts painting in random places on the box. I walked out, and he said, 'Do you know who did this?' And I said, 'Well, I did, years ago, when they told me I could.' He said, 'Well, they lied. It's illegal. I'm not happy with the outcome of the looks of this, and I wish that I would have got the guy's name who said I could do it years ago. Why had nobody ever bothered with it all these years? This guy definitely had woken up on the wrong side of the bed. He refused to give me his name as well. Let me reiterate, I know that the box is the property of PG&E and not ours to paint, which is why we asked the first time if we could,' end quote." She shared pictures of the box that looked horrible. It appeared that PG&E representative was more interested in asserting his power over her and putting her in her place than he was about safety, visual aesthetics, or even the legality of the situation. This person made an attack on one of our neighbors, one of the citizens of Los Banos, the city that you, Mr. Mayor, represent. And so I want to encourage you to look into these matters because they are the day-to-day realities that matter to the real people here in Los Banos. So I ask, would you be as willing to face PG&E as you are to face Councilwoman Lewis and defend the Brenda Vidal's of our community? Would you be willing, and I ask this seriously, to reach out to PG&E as the elected representative of this community and tell them that you will not tolerate them ever treating one of your people with such disrespect? How you handle a matter like that is going to reveal a lot. It's easy to say that you represent and defend the community at large, but any person or entity that will not represent or defend regular individuals is not capable of doing so for the community. You can't do something big if you're not even capable of doing something small. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kathy Ballard. I can't read it off my phone, so I have notes. I'm here as a taxpayer and not a former Measure H committee member, although I did enjoy my time as one and was disappointed that I wasn't welcomed back. I noticed on last week's agenda money coming from the Measure H Fund, the half-cent sales tax that was passed in 2019 to help fund our Police and Fire Department 80% and Parks and Rec at 15% to facilitate the improvements of the Noah Jones Park. I have confirmed that currently we have three members on a committee, five, so there is a quorum. I did put out a request to Mr. Lambert, but as of this meeting, I've had no response. I know that Mr. Begonia is my representative. In the past, he has been unresponsive, so I have reached out to others for answers. In August of last year, we had a meeting that was informal. I'm assuming that's why Mr. Begonia, our council-appointed representative, was not present, and no meeting notes were taken. At that meeting, we were advised that we would be having a meeting prior to our city's next budget, which I think starts in June. My questions are, one, when is that meeting going to be scheduled? Two, when will it be publicly posted? And I assume, since it is a public meeting, that people can attend, just like meetings are here. We need to know where our tax dollars are going and how it's being divided. I'm available to answer any questions if you need clarification on my request to my city representatives. I observed at a school board meeting, also regulated by the Brown Act, that this can be done if my council would respond. I guess I got all fish eyes, so no response.
We can't respond to you in a public forum.
But I know that at the school board, they did respond to you.
We're not a school board.
But it's following the same Brown Act.
I'll refer it to our city attorney.
Matters that come up at the public forum that aren't on the agenda can't be turned into an agenda item where the council goes back and forth with the person making the request. You can make a request, submit it to the clerk, and it can be processed that way.
But from what I'm told, a city agenda is only made out by Mr. Pinheiro. So where would I put that request since Mr. Pinheiro also doesn't respond to me?
What request are you asking?
To get my answers, I guess. If I'm speaking in a public forum, what I'm asking you as the city attorney is how do I get my answers?
You submit it to your representatives, or you can submit it to the clerk or to the city manager.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mayor and council. My name is Blanche George, and I live in the downtown area. I just wanted to talk to you a little bit about Mr. Ronnie Navarro. He's a local businessperson. And he started his business in 1997, and he's an employee shy of 50. What I love about this young man, and I believe that you may know about him, is that I remember, oh my gosh, when he was such a young man and he was pulling weeds for a few bucks and also doing lawn mower. He had his little lawnmower, and he was working really hard. Now, he employs so many people after 27 years. It's just wonderful to see a local young man grow up to be a great entrepreneur that owns Ronnie's Landscaping. What I see from Ronnie's Landscaping when I'm throughout our town every day is they take good pride in doing their work. Recently, there was a damage to a certain area in town, and they were right on top of it. And they've been working on cleaning it up ever since. But they do take pride in their work. They have helped with the homeless, where the homeless have destroyed certain parts of the park area, and they've come up and they've cleaned it up. They're an honorable company, and I'm so glad that he continues to flourish. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I was experiencing déjà vu as I watched the last city council meeting. Greg Hostetler shared his experience trying to work with the city despite their refusal to communicate with him. His experience sounds familiar. I've been asking the same questions for nine months and have yet to receive an answer. But Mr. Hostetler is not the only one who shared a too-familiar story. Marion Santos stepped forward to discuss the city blackballing his business in retaliation. We've heard this before. After the owners of Strike Fitness came to the public forum, instead of addressing their concerns, Brett Jones retaliated against them by telling them they should write a check back to the city for the grant money they rightfully received and threaten their upcoming plans to move into a new building. These issues in the public forum appear to be a reoccurring problem for everybody. Your bullying may be effective at making people not want to speak publicly about the issues, but there's one place they get to freely speak their mind, and that's the ballot box. Measure G and H were not merely a vote about the clerk, treasurer, and mayor positions. They were a vote about whether this council should have more power and whether the citizens have trust in this council to do the right thing. Based on the results, a 76% no vote on Measure H. The answers to those two questions is obvious. The citizens of Los Banas have no faith in this council, nor should they because you've put your own self-interests above doing what's best for the city. And if you want to prove otherwise, then finally explain this list of grant recipients, of which a councilman sits at the very top.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. My first longstanding complaint, the homeless on the rail trail. I haven't seen any movement on anything. I know you say your hands are tied. There was a suggestion to move them to one location, which I've been told isn't going to work out. So I'm sure we can find another location. It's, they're just embedding at this point. I mean, they have houses practically built. Really embarrassing. Next one is, I was really dismayed about, to find out about the Shaughnessy Village Park put on hold because the piece of land wasn't purchased, which completely, I don't understand how that gets overlooked. You go ahead and you accept bids, and you plan on putting a park there, and all the residents are relying on that, and then it stopped because you don't own the piece of property. So not only is that heartbreaking, but you do have a certain amount of time in which the estimate that you were given from Ronnie's is valid, and then it has to go and be rebid, which more than likely, prices are going to rise because everything is rising. So I would encourage you to work with Hostetler and buy that piece of property so that park can be built. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and staff. My name is Greg Hostetler. I'm here to talk about the Vineyard Subdivision tonight. Branchwood Estates, over 2,000 homes. There's a lighting and landscape district that each and all those homes that were built pay on their property taxes every year, and it continues to go up. Millions of dollars that our company installed over the years is a complete disarray. Missing dead trees, plant drippers, no plants, missing trees. It's a horrible mess down Stonewood Drive, blocks 600 and 700, that the center divider is naked. There was millions of dollars spent out there, and I believe the condition of that, what the city has done with all the collection of millions of dollars in the lighting and landscape district money, where's the money? Can you live out there? That's your district. It's been going on four years while you've been elected. It appears to me that the Branchwood Estates and the Vineyard Subdivision residents are getting ripped off at a minimum, being taken advantage of. The parking lots at both parks, Branchwood Park and the Vineyard Park, have holes in the asphalt. And they haven't been swept in years. They're a mess. You're paving all over town, but how about the people paying the lighting and landscape so you're not taking care of them? The people simply are not getting their money's worth out there. It's a ripoff. People don't even know, some of them, that they're paying it, and they're getting ripped off. You guys might not want to hear this, but these are facts. Every night that I come here, I'm talking about facts. I got to back them up. I'll have more. I might bring a paper and pass them out, Mayor. This is your residence, where you live, your area. You need to take care of your area as a councilman. You're elected by a district, and you're not doing it, Ken. Josh, as city manager, it would take you a couple hours to drive the city and see these things that may not be getting done and help out the council and the residents. After all, you got paid $1.8 million, and the salary package, I understand, is $265,000 a year. What do you do for the city? I'm just asking. I don't see it. And I'm talking about the parks out there. That's easy. You've collected $17 million for parks, and you haven't built one. Where is it? Where's all this money at? Another thing, Josh, I'm going to tell you something. You may not want to hear it, but the conversation you're having with staff, former staff, and the directive you're giving them is creating a liability for the city and you personally, and maybe them if they execute on things you tell them. Because I'm getting calls. And people call me and tell me, thank you for coming to this city council and talk about the facts and asking questions. So I'm going to tell you that I know more things than you might know I know about what you're doing because some people are uncomfortable about what directives you're giving them, and they're scared for their jobs and liability. Oh, yes. And I have facts for that, too. I'm going to be back here in a few weeks, and I'm going to talk about the corruption that is and has gone on in this city for a number of years. Not counting the facts, I'll tell you right now a little taste of it, that a city manager sat in front of the city attorney, not our Mr. Vaughn, and asked me for a $10,000 bribe. And if any of you, staff or otherwise, think you're going to ask me for a bribe and get it, I will absolutely turn you in. And he asked for that in front of the city attorney, which is Black Bear Restaurant today. And it was about 11 o'clock after a council meeting, and the city attorney told him, "You can't say that." And he said, "Yes, I can, and I mean it." Unfortunately, they're both dead today. And that's only the iceberg of what's going on in this city. I think I need to shut it off right here.
One minute.
And I'll be back another day because what I know about is bad stuff. Mr. Vaughn, I'm surprised he works for you anymore why he hasn't resigned about what's going on in this city. Thank you.
Thank you.
This corruption is out of control.
Mayor, City Council, Dustin Capresso, President of Los Banas Little League. I'm not
I'm not going to come here and guarantee I'm going to come back to another meeting because this isn't my cup of tea. But when we talk about facts, Colorado Ballpark was built in 1964, I believe, or '65. I had the honor to play there as a kid. I know some of the members on city councils, some of the people out here have had the honor of playing out there also. I know we're going to discuss it or you guys are going to discuss it, talk about it. We really need to look into what we can do for our kids in this town. I hear Mr. Hostetler talk about corruption and what goes on. There was a lot of things that went on back in the years when he was here also, so we won't get into that. But alls I know is the kids of Los Banas need stuff for them to do. And Colorado Park is a perfect example. We had over 300 kids out there this weekend. Smiles on their faces, running around. Greatest enjoyment of my life, and I've been able to coach a lot of kids in this town and been able to do it, but the greatest enjoyment of my life is to be out there and watch kids from the ages of seven to 12 go out there and play the greatest game on a field that's been there a long time that's falling apart. I know the dollar bill is going to be a big issue, but really look at what it's going to. It's going to our kids in this community and our kids in this community need it. The skateboarders are back here. They need it. These kids in this town need stuff for them to do. And so really look hard at it. Joe's doing a great job of getting stuff spearheaded. You guys are doing a great job. I know everybody here badgering on you guys. You guys got a tough job ahead of you. That's not my job to come in here and badger on you. My job is just to come in here and say that it's time that we do something with Colorado Ballpark because putting a Band-Aid to it is not going to work. It's been there too long. So we either need to uproot it and redo it or we need to find somewhere else to go and build a new one. Because if we do it right, people will come to Los Banas. Organizations will be able to have tournaments in Los Banas and we can have people come to Los Banas. I mean, we do a lot, we do Little League, there's All-Stars, there's sectionals, there's state tournaments. There's certain ones we can have and there's certain ones we can't have because of facilities we have out there. So when it means a state tournament, that means other teams throughout our state and our district come to Los Banas. It's money that comes to us. So I don't know how much longer I'm going to be there, but I know the people coming behind me are going to stay in the same direction that it needs to be. We do need something to go on. So thank you for taking the time and you won't see my face back in here for a long time because this isn't my cup of tea. So thank you guys for taking the time to listen to me.
Thank you.
I'm TJ Lowbig. Been in the town for 12 years or so. It's been a nice journey so far. Started in San Jose, saw that town grow and they built beautiful facilities, this and that. Was living in Morgan Hill for a while. Saw that town grow and they built incredible facilities there, which is very close. We've all drove by them. What Dustin was saying is something that should have been done five, 10, sorry, you're a little shaky. So it should have been done five, 10 years ago and it wasn't done. Greg was in here talking about everything that the city should be doing for everybody. But some of this town, some of the people in the city have owned half the city, have built it. And the cities, the townspeople before, the old people that were dealing with it and some of you were involved in everything, made the deals and said, okay, you can just build this little park and, you know, if you don't want to build it whatever later, you know, or whatever the deals were. And this isn't factual from me. But just like our newspaper in town is not factual at all right now. And that's where everybody's reading right now. And Hostetler probably and whoever else, the older generation that's, the news has just ended down and just build up rather than break our city down because we have a divide. We have half of us crying about stuff and half of us want to build stuff and half of us are just mad. And it's not okay. We have a couple, we have a few council members that have only been in here for a few years or a year or so and they're trying to do what they can as far as I know. I mean, we've gotten a lot of help over at the parks and even Greg was saying, oh, the parks are one thing, but we're dealing with the bigger, bigger things, you know? The towns around us that have built awesome things have came from big money in the towns that are excited to build something and put their name on it or whatever it is. And I know we don't have all that here because, you know, people want to hold on to their money and that's fine. But if there's deals to be made, the deals have to be made right. And, you know, if, you know, economy is changing a little bit, maybe, or maybe not. But Mr. Hostetler is probably worried about, you know, he needs to get these houses done before whatever. So that we're going to deal with a bunch of empty houses, you know, if the economy does go down a little bit. So whoever's the future of our, you know, city, I know he has tons of land that maybe we want to build up and to do whatever. But sometimes, you know, it's not worth it. Sometimes we got to build in different directions. And that's why right now it might be a time just to help our kids. And, you know, we don't need to build as many houses as we possibly can, even though there's a lot of revenue. But we need to help the kids and build these parks and do what wasn't done the last 20 years or when maybe Greg was making the big, big money. And I don't mean to say big money. I don't know his money. I don't know where he's at. I don't know where anybody's at. But I do deal with a lot of people in town and I know there's plenty of money around this town to do some awesome stuff. So whatever we can do, let's do it and let's work together is how I look at it. Our newspaper's been trashing a lot of stuff and they say it's factual or whatever it is and you could look into whatever, but comparing something to another city or comparing our town to other towns when we're trying to build and do what we can, we have a ton of commuters, we need more facilities, we need more stuff. You know, and, you know, it's just sad. So let's work together and 75% or whatever the, you know, vote for measure H or whatever, that's one thing. But that's also everybody that's commuters that's read this paper and is like, oh, man, this is crazy. Like Greg Hostetler is what people are supposed to look up to is up here crying, you know, about so much stuff. It just, I didn't know it was that bad sitting here today. So that's why I got a little emotional with talking. But when it comes down to it, if our city's going to build, when I first came here, I saw there was a golf course being built, all kinds of stuff. I was excited. That got trashed. Other things take years to get done. That's why they need to expand the amount of time, you know, or get the contracts done quicker and sign stuff or do whatever we got to do to get it done. But when it comes down to it, why do we need to give anybody, you know, reason to build more stuff and make their money when we can't get the facilities we need? So thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and Staff. On behalf of the Los Banas Downtown Association, we would like to extend our deepest gratitude to the City of Los Banas as well as the Los Banas Police Department and the Fire Department for their invaluable support and outstanding contribution to our recent first annual festival pub crawl. The success of our event would not have been possible without the unwavering support and collaboration of the city officials, law enforcement, and emergency responders. Your dedication to ensuring the safety and well-being of our community truly made a significant impact on the overall experience of our attendees. We were incredibly impressed by the amazing turnout and the seamlessness coordination demonstrated by the Los Banas Police Department and the Fire Department throughout the festival pub crawl. Your professionalism and expertise and commitment to serving the community were evident in every aspect of the event and we were immensely grateful for your hard work and dedication. Please convey our sincere appreciation to all the officers, firefighters, and personnel who played a role in making our event a resounding success. Their tireless efforts did not go unnoticed and we are truly fortunate to have such dedicated individuals serving our community. So once again, thank you to the City of Los Banas, the Los Banas Police Department, and the Fire Department for their exceptional support for helping to make our first annual festival pub crawl an unforgettable experience. So we look forward to continued collaboration and future success together. So our next festival will be the Beer and Wine Stroll, April 27th, and Casino Night has been postponed to June 22nd. So with warm regards, Mary Bull Garcia, Executive Director of the Los Banas Downtown Association. Thank you for your time and have a wonderful evening.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, seeing none, I will close the public forum. And move on to item six, consideration of the approval of the consent agenda.
Items on the consent agenda are as follows. Warrant number 243986 through 244247 in the amount of $2,539,933.33. City Council Resolution Number 6745, authorizing the city manager to execute the contract with Ronnie's Inc. for the Officer Noah Jones Ballpark Sidewalk Project in the amount of $129,549 and a project contingency of $19,500. City Council Resolution Number 6746, acting as the City of Los Banas Groundwater Sustainability Agency, approving the special project agreement for the development of a single groundwater sustainability plan for the Delta Mendota Sub Basin and approving the memorandum of agreement among the Delta Mendota Sub Basin Groundwater Sustainability Agencies and approving the first amended memorandum of understanding between the City of Los Banas Groundwater Sustainability Agency and the San Joaquin River Exchange Contractors Groundwater Sustainability Agency. City Council Resolution Number 6747, approving, finding, and authorizing the emergency repair of the airport runway lighting in the amount of $83,300. City Council Resolution Number 6748, approving the acceptance of a State of California Officer Wellness and Mental Health Grant administered by Board of State and Community Corrections in the amount of $30,189.55 and amending the 2023-2024 fiscal year budget by increasing the appropriation amount for expenditures and revenues in the amount of $30,189.55. City Council Resolution Number 6749, authorizing the city manager to sign Amendment Number One to the Landscape Maintenance Services Agreement between the City of Los Banas and Ronnie's Inc., adding 19 locations to the agreement and amending the fiscal year 2023-2024 budget by increasing appropriations in the following accounts, in the amount of $9,585.72. Account 273458200220 in the amount of $795.60. Account 274458200220 in the amount of $468. Account 279458200220 in the amount of $2,752.40. Account 281458200220 in the amount of $5,358. And account 287458200220 in the amount of $3,714.60. And the items are to be approved as submitted.
All right, thank you. Any members of council wish to discuss, remove an item for discussion? Councilmember Lewis?
Thank you. I'd like to remove item number 6C as in Charles and 6D as in David.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? No? Seeing none? All right, let's start with item 6C. For this, we'll go to our Public Works Director, City Engineer Burks.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Item 6C is a three-part resolution consisting of a sustainability plan, a groundwater sustainability plan, a, an MOA, a memorandum of agreement amongst the Delta Mendota's groundwater agencies, and a memorandum of understanding amongst the agencies about its, the coordination and sharing costs. As you may or may not be aware, the groundwater sub basin and the plan that was submitted a couple of years ago was found insufficient by the state. And they asked, they asked that the various agencies, we had six separate plans and it was found inadequate. So the state directed that the groundwater basin come up with one single plan. So these three actions are the result, are actions to comply with the state's direction to come up with one sustainable plan throughout the agency. And also that the city agrees to cooperate with our neighboring groundwater agencies that would agree to share the costs and that we're going to have one overall plan for the Delta Mendota Groundwater Basin. I've met with Mr. White who's here from the exchange, who can also enlighten. He has a little more background on the groundwater management in the Delta Mendota Groundwater Basin to answer any questions on that. But this is the city's agreement and concurrence, coordinating with all the various agencies to come up with one sustainability plan to meet the state requirement. And it's going to take 12 to 24 months to put together. And this is our portion of coming together. I believe we have like, I think there's 23 different agencies that we're trying to coordinate. Happy to take any questions. And Mr. White's here to help add some background.
Well, thank you, excuse me, thank you, Mr. Burks. And certainly, I know when a lot of this started formulating, I think it was back in 14?
Yes, ma'am.
2014?
Yes, ma'am.
The process by which the state said that, you know, our water district area in the City of Los Banos had to operate as far as sustainability is concerned was quite elementary compared to where it is now. So I just kind of wanted to bring this out a little bit more so the public could understand why there's this significant change in how we were, we had a contract with the state at one point and now the contract's changing. So, Mr. White, did you have something?
Yeah, we had a plan put together for the state and we submitted it. And they asked for some revisions. We did comply to those and at the end of the day, the Department of Water Resources found our plan to be insufficient. Basically because unlike some other basins who had one grand groundwater sustainability plan for their whole basin, we had six different plans. And state was having a hard time, you know, looking at the various parts of the various GSPs. They said, well, how does this match up and how does this language match up? The plans that did get adopted for various subbasins, they had one GSP for the whole plan. So we are in the process of converting. We're working with state board staff and we are in consultation with them constantly on this. Mr. Burks indicated that we have, we will be done in 12 to 24 months. We'll be done in 12 months or before. And we will, we're on track to resubmit our plan for consistency before the state board has a hearing to determine whether or not to put us in a probationary status. And we're one of the last GSPs to have a hearing because we have a credible effort and they recognize that and they're giving us the time to put this thing together. So we're happy and we're glad to be working with our partners in this basin. We reached out to other communities within our subarea. And I'll just tell you, this goes from Mendota, is Mendota, Fireball, Dos Palos, Los Banos, Gustine, Newman, the small communities of Crow's Landing and Valta. All of those are within our plan. Each of those cities that I talked about, Fireball, Mendota, Newman, Dos Palos, Gustine, and Madeira have already adopted this as part of this effort. And so we're proud to have this effort put together. And I'm also proud to be a part of the team here with the city. And I go way back. I came to the city in 1977, so about when the city was formed, okay? And so I know this city very well. I've spent the first part of my career actually working for the city engineer. We were under contract at Stoddard and Associates. So I know the city very well, did a lot of work here. I know the groundwater very well. I went up through the ranks at Stoddard's and also went to work for Central California Irrigation District in 1993. And I spent my career as a water manager and as a civil engineer managing groundwater in this valley. And also, we had many cooperative efforts with this city in order to manage groundwater here locally. And I'm proud of that effort and I'm proud of our accomplishments. And I'm also proud that we're continuing to partner up in this and get our new plan submitted.
Well, thank you very much for your help in clarifying this and Mr. Bergman as well. Water is a very complicated subject.
Believe me.
The state has a tendency to make it a bit more complicated, I think that it needs to be. But we are where we are now and I just want to thank everybody for... And I just want to thank everybody for making this process easier and, and that the City of Los Banos is now being brought on so we can complete this contract process. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And then we'll move on to item D. This is also with our Public Works Director, City Engineer Burks.
Yes, sir. And Mr. Mayor, members of council, this item is to authorize the contract for airport runway lighting, emergency repairs. The, the lighting system at the runway are not working. Staff has reached out to multiple electricians to get the, the runway lights repaired. We've only received one response from Royal, Royal Electric Contractors. They're a well-known reputable firm. They, they do heavy construction. They've been in airport lighting since nineteen eighty. And so staff is recommending that the council authorize the city manager to engage Royal Electric to make the repairs. We also happen to be meeting tomorrow with the state at the airport to review the, the airport and, and the repair, the, the lighting system. They, they've indicated that that are, this moves, they, they welcome the move of retaining this contractor to get the, to get the work done. Happy to take any questions.
Okay, thank you. Just a couple of questions. Under the exclusion, there are twenty-five points on the contract of what I'm assuming the contractor is excluding responsibility for. Is the airport runway going to be affected by any of those things at all on, on the proposal?
No, I don't, no. It's, it's just the lights only.
Just the lights only?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And do we have, does the city have information as to when these lights initially went out? Because I, I see we're kind of doing, I don't know if this is being done under emergency situation, but there's information in the packet.
Do we know when?
Under, you know, under the city code of, of doing this on an emergency basis. So did the lights just go out recently or did they go out last year or?
They went out last year.
They went out last year?
Unstructured, yes.
Okay. It is, does anybody know why we didn't do anything last year when we went out, when they went out?
Aye.
Good evening. We've been looking into it and I've, we've had, my name is Carlos, City of Los Banos Public Works. And we've been having trouble locating electricians to work on, in this area, in this field of lighting. A local electrician that even has some, has worked with us in the past, decided to pass on this particular job. A, another, another local electrician who I believe is, is retired, he kind of pointed us in the direction of Royal Electric. I made contact with them. They came out, they diagnosed trouble. They said they were willing to come out and do the work. I reached out to multiple electricians and with no luck. I then reached out to our surrounding airports and between our surrounding airports having an in-house electrician who would then, they would take on the responsibilities of any electrical issues. The ones that outsourced it were also using Royal Electric. That's where we're at now. We're hoping to move forward with this to make the correction for the lighting.
So the lights are just out altogether on our runway?
Our runway lights have, have failed. It's a electrical component, not out in the field trouble. It's a regulator that regulates the, that sends out the power source to the lights on the runway. That failed.
Well, thank you for clarifying, you know, the, the steps of trying to secure someone to, to take care of this. So now we have somebody that we can go to, a source that we can go to in the future if something else happens with our runway lights. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Burks.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right. So let's do item C first. Do I have a motion on item C? I'm sorry.
I have no problem with taking a vote on all of them.
On all the items?
Yeah. It was just a clarification, not a, a separate vote.
Okay. All right. All right. Do I have a motion on the consent agenda? Councilmember Jones?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda submitted.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Begonia?
Second the motion.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you. All right. Move on to item seven. This is the public hearing. If you challenge a proposed action as described here in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing described herein or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to this public hearing. So we'll go to item seven A to receive public comments on and consider the City of Los Banos General Plan Housing Element, annual progress report for calendar year 2023, and to consider an exemption for the requirements of the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, pursuant to Section 15061B3 of the SEQA guidelines. For this, we'll go to Community and Economic Development Director, Suzie Elms.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. So as you may recall, I give you an update yearly on our progress report with the housing element. This is required per government code that each jurisdiction prepare and submit an annual progress report on its housing element by April 1st of each year. We are required to contain the status of the housing element and the progress in its implementation, the progress in meeting the city's regional housing needs, our RENA, and any actions taken by the city toward completion of those programs. We're required to be reviewed and considered by the city's legislative body, which is the city council, through a public hearing process. And then subsequently, we submit that report to the Office of Planning and Research and HCD, the Department of Housing and Community Development with the State of California, although it does not require their approval. It requires the city council's approval. We just have to submit the report to the state. So the purpose, we need to do this in order to remain compliant with the government code and housing element law. This is also necessary to update not only the city council but our community on housing development and the implementation of the housing element. And then to ensure eligibility for state grant funding. That's probably the most important because the proposed annual progress report ensures that the city will remain in compliance for future grant opportunities and state, state funding as it becomes available. So this is a snapshot of our 2023 RENA, our Regional Housing Needs Allocation Progress. We are in the fifth cycle, which started in 2016. And 2023 is what we're reporting on tonight. And based on the fifth cycle, we've provided forty-one very low income units, seventy-four low, twenty-two moderate income units and two thousand one hundred and five above moderate units. So what that means is that we still have remaining five hundred and sixty-three very low income units, three hundred and fifty-seven low units and three hundred and seventy-four moderate income units to still build. Now, this is, at the fifth cycle level, this is an allocation that's encouraged. The entire state is broken down by regions, by their counties, and then each city is allocated their housing needs. And so at the fifth cycle level, we are being asked to meet these housing needs. And then there is a carrot associated with achieving like pro-housing designation is, and then there's additional housing funds that become available for those communities that do meet those, those RENA progress. It is difficult for a community like Los Banos. It has been the challenge for Los Banos for many, many years as well as though communities within the Central Valley in that affordable housing doesn't pencil out most of the time in the Central Valley. The area median income is already low and it requires heavy subsidy to make those projects pencil out. So we do have, we do have a need within the City of Los Banos, as you can see, based on our arena. It's not for a lack of trying. We do support any type of affordable housing that would help support our community. We just haven't had projects that have been able to pencil out. Multi-family, as long as there are twenty units or more, automatically qualify as affordable housing, even if it's market rate. Based on the density, it's still considered affordable housing. So we can have really nice projects that look nice, that are secure and safe for our community, that still are considered affordable housing. So implementation, there are eight goals that are required in our housing element. So the first goal and what we're reporting on within this report is that we have to provide adequate sites for residential development and alternate housing choices at affordable costs, which we do. We have site inventory that we've provided. Goal two is that we remove governmental constraints, which this is an ongoing, continuous process. We're constantly reviewing state law and housing bills that also work to remove governmental constraints. And then we as staff work to streamline housing projects. Goal three is to encourage the maintenance improvement and rehabilitation of the city's existing housing stock and encourage the maintenance and upkeep of existing affordable housing. The city previously had rehab programs that helped implement this goal. We are still maintaining some of those programs, though we no longer have current grants available to provide. But we do keep inventory of our current housing stock and are always looking for additional funding sources. Goal four is to achieve energy efficiency in housing activities, which we do through our, our Title 24 and Green Code requirements with the State of California. Goal five is to ensure that all residents have access to housing, which is a lofty goal with, with the City of Los Banos. But we've committed to achieving this. We've created recently, within the past year, a housing division to help ensure that all residents within our community are housed. Goal six is to increase the percentage of homeowners in the city and provide adequate information on all possible housing assistance programs and distribute to homeowners, developers and other residents. We have information on the city's website. We're also looking for funding opportunities to help with homeownership. Goal seven is to maintain an adequate percentage of affordable rental units within this city to accommodate all income groups and family types, which we, we do encourage affordable programs, rental programs and affordable development. But as I stated, this goal is actually probably one of the most challenging. And goal eight is to encourage new development projects for special needs groups. And where we have been successful in our arena is when we've had projects specialized to special needs groups at such as seniors. You can recall the Overland Courts project off of Rockport is an affordable housing senior community that did meet some of our very low income categories. So public comment, public notices were published on March fifteenth, 2023 in the Merced Sunstar. And as of today's date, no comments have been received. So staff is requesting that the city council would open the public hearing, receive testimony and written comments and adopt Resolution Number 6750, adopting the 2023 Annual Housing Element Report on the housing element. And that concludes my presentation.
All right. Thank you for that. So we will go to the public hearing. I'll open the public hearing. Go on with any questions? All right. Seeing none. Close the public hearing. We go to, looking for item one. Do I have any questions from council? No? Do I have a motion? Councilmember Lambert?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to go ahead and approve the Resolution Number 6750, adopting the 2023 Annual Report.
Thank you. Councilmember Jones?
I'll second that, Mayor.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you. All right. Let's move on to item eight. Colorado Ballpark Renovation Presentation. For this, we'll go to Parks and Recreation Director, Heim.
All right. Thank you, City Council, and good evening. So the project that I'm bringing tonight to discuss is the Colorado Ballpark location for renovation. And tonight, I'm hoping to have, receive discussion, comments and direction from, from City Council. Colorado Ballpark, as many of you know, is one of our oldest parks in the City of Los Banos. It does share land with the City of Los Banos Municipal Airport, located off of, park is located off of Colorado Ave. The park has hosted Little League since nineteen sixty-nine. It's a, it's an older park than that, but it has hosted Little League since then. And the park, that league supports our surrounding communities. The location itself is in a disadvantaged community, what is considered by the state to be disadvantaged community, as well as those supporting entities are, are also largely considered disadvantaged. The skate park is also dated on site, as are the tennis courts. Both are in need of upgrade. As we kind of go through some of the site conditions, you'll see the major amenities on site are all aging and in some cases, lack compliance issues. So we can start the, the skate park, which is one of the newer amenities on site. They're about twenty-five years old now. This, this skate park is heavily used, is very popular, but it does feature a shallow bowl and, and lack of modern amenities for the skate park. You'll see some buildings on site, including the main Field Two Bathroom concession. This facility is probably pushing seventy years old and has a number of compliance issues. Particularly, this building is where the electrical goes to. And electrical has been a major site problem for us, especially in the recent years. And part of that is what you can see as those large PGE light poles that are on site. We've had three of those go down each of the last, one each of the last three years, three total. You'll also see the tennis courts on site. The, the courts were built in the late nineteen seventies and the asphalt on site is deteriorating in condition. You'll see different fencing and ball fields on site. There are three ball fields. I'll show an overview of that. And another amenity on site is the parking lot. And you can see in that last image, the restroom facility there as well. So the overview, you can see again, there's the three ball fields there, the, the north field at the top of the image there, Field Two in the middle there and the, the south field on the south end there. You can also see the skate park and tennis courts and the restroom. And there is also a concession building behind both Field Two and the north field as well. You can see the large parking lot off of Colorado Ave and Pine Street there. So this project has had quite an extensive background, at least during my time here. It kind of started with the Park's Master Plan Process. This park has needed improvements for quite some time. And during the Park's Master Plan Process, we were able to have quite a few public meetings, community surveys in, in terms of taking input from the public. Thankfully, the user groups on site, the skateboarders, Little League, as well as the neighbors have really been contributing to this process throughout our, our different attempts to identify and evaluate what we can do at this park. Another opportunity came up in 2021 when we applied for the Royal Recreation and Tourism Grant through the state. We did not receive this grant, but we were able to take input from the public, both during the Park's Master Plan and during that grant process. We were able to develop different concepts for the park and what, what could be developed out there. And it has helped us build what we're going to be presenting tonight. And recently, in fall of 2023, we were able to have stakeholder meetings with the Little League as well as the skateboard groups. And that gave us a lot more detailed information and allowed us to really ask some specific questions on what this facility needs and, and how can we best serve both the, the users today as well as long into the future. This item was presented as well to the Parks and Rec Commission in January with, receiving positive comments. So this is the conceptual plan that Calla, a landscape architect that we have contracted with, designed, again, based off the compiling of all those public comments as well as site analysis, topographic and site analysis, topographic and geotechnical surveys. And so you can see, we did try to keep the footprint similar to what is on-site currently. However, you'll notice that Field Two, for example, was moved to the north to match up with the north field, and the north field was shrunk to the same size as that Field Two. So you'll see the differences in those three fields. There's one that's 300 feet homerun fence and two that are 200 feet. The purpose of this is that that's really the most popular age groups for Little League, ages eight to 12 or so. Really support all three of these fields, but those two smaller fields would really support the group in terms of both league use as well as tournament use. And you can see some supporting amenities for the ball field. So you'll notice some batting cages as well as bullpen spaces. Presently, it's pretty limited in terms of what is available on-site for the players to be able to warm up. Again, it's a pretty confined space despite being part of the airport property. You also see that the parking lot gets shifted to the middle. This serves a few uses. One, it did expand the parking lot quite a bit from what the current parking lot is, and it did allow for electrical to be placed in there. So there's lighting as well as medians. We have quite a few vehicles that will do figure eights and different not welcoming items out at the parking lot. And so this will help create that. It also really creates a center plaza space. And so when you start to look closer to the skate park, you'll see a large shade structure as well as a concession and restroom building. This will really create that community vibe. I think it's something that you'll see very commonly when you start to look at other cities and their complexes. And it's just something that we feel would really support both the skate park on a daily use as well as the specialized uses of those ball fields. You can see that the skate park there has been expanded quite a bit. It's about a third to two-thirds, to half larger than what the current skate park is. It also includes modern amenities as part of that skate park. And I'm very excited about what could possibly be included in that. And then you'll see lighted tennis courts. Again, those are shifted to the south there and now connecting to the south field. And again, those would be our only tennis courts in the city of Los Banos. The skate park is our only skate park in Los Banos. And so really, when you take a step back and look at this concept, it doesn't change the footprint of the park, but it does provide upgraded facilities and that supports users of all ages. So we have T-ball kids at these parks, ages five and up. We have skateboarders of all ages. We have tennis players of all ages that come out. And again, it's a -- this would be a destination location within the parks due to its specialized use. It's not too far, obviously, from the highway, and it's just an historic location for parks in Los Banos. So... Again, as we kind of take the next steps forward, looking for direction, comments, discussion from city council. Obviously, when you look at a conceptual plan, there's a lot of different directions that we can take this park location and take the future of skate park, ball fields, tennis courts in Los Banos. And so I'm hoping to get comment on that. There, one of the reasons why we're bringing this item tonight is to just to receive direction. And based on that direction, we'll be able to evaluate how to move forward in terms of the impact that this will have on the airport property, specifically the Land Use Commission with the airport, and being able to present something that we feel confident the city council has evaluated and looked at and trying to get approval for that. Another big item relating to this renovation is funding, of course. This is a substantial renovation, as you can tell. The estimate of probable cost is between $13 million and $17 million for this concept design. Obviously, that would be by far the largest investment in parks in the city's history. And we would be looking at both internal and external funding sources. The city does have available funding in the Park Development Fund, which is based off of impact fees, as well as other funding sources internally. The city would also be seeking external funding sources, and that's another reason that staff is seeking direction from city council. There are available grants, such as the MLB Youth Foundation Grant, that we will be proceeding with if council gives us direction. There's the SPP Grant that is expected to be released in summer 2024 that would also qualify for this grant. So staff is evaluating external funding sources. And again, this area is a disadvantaged community, and so it does qualify for most grant opportunities. And so staff will be seeking as much funding as possible from external sources. However, staff fully expects that there will be a substantial investment from internal funding, possibly grant matching funds, depending on the grant and the requirements related to that. And that concludes my presentation. Any questions?
Can you just pull up the conceptual design, please? I just have one quick question. What, is that a second, as far as like a bowl that's between triangulated between 511 and 12 that's attached to the skate park? So that's two basically bodies there? Is that what that... It's not labeled, but it's between 511 and 12 on the top of the map?
511.
Yeah, the skate park.
So between 511 and 12, that's, there's three trees there, and then the edges of that skate park there.
So that's a separate bowl, because I see number four.
Yes. Yeah, that whole trapezoidal spaces at the skate park. And again, that's nearly double the size of what the current skate park is.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Other questions from council? Councilmember Jones?
Yes, Mr. Heim. Regarding funding, do we have funds available for build-out if, for some reason, we can't obtain external funding sources?
We do not presently have internal funding to completely fund this concept design. I would anticipate we would be able to sufficiently fund at least half of the project. However, we would need external funding or council's direction to seek other internal sources.
So if we don't have it in the park fund, then we'd have to go to the general fund? If we didn't get external funding?
Yes, possibly. There are obviously a number of different funding sources, but general fund would be one of them. Any discretionary funding, really?
I mean, luckily, it's in a good census district to qualify for external funding, so it should be pretty easy there to get it. So that shouldn't really be an issue. What I'm just surprised about is why, you know, this park's been bad ever since I was little, playing Little League and T-ball, and it's just been awful. And why this wasn't done 20 years ago. And, you know, it seemed like we've had numerous different city managers and department heads over the years, and it just seems like it's always gotten put off to the side from one year to the next and next. And it's just, it's long overdue. And I appreciate the city manager being diligent, getting out, checking out our parks and making it a top priority. I appreciate the fact that he created the Parks and Rec Director position to have somebody's eyes and ears on this stuff, dedicated to making it nice. And so this is great that you guys are addressing it. I hope we get it completed one way or another, because I think this community needs it. So I'm excited. Thank you.
Thank you. And I would urge council to also consider some of the compliance issues on-site, whether this is the conceptual design or different design is developed. There are electrical and ADA compliance issues on-site.
Councilmember Lewis? Thank you. Joe, I just wanted to go back a little bit more on the finances. It's indicated it's going to cost between $13 and $17 million. And possibly because it is in a low-income area, there may be some state grants or other grants that we might be eligible to apply for. There's $150,000 that's allocated out of a fund budget, Park Development Fund budget, to start the topography site survey. So with that in mind, once that's done, what other funds do we have for this area? I mean, I don't know if there's Landscape Lighting District funds in that area because it is old. But are there any other funds in Parks and Recreation, other than this $150,000, to consider starting this project?
Yeah. Funding-wise, and again, it's a broad topic, right? But funding-wise, we have allocated this fiscal year, which will end June 30th, $150,000 from the Park Development Fund. That was for both the development of the conceptual plan as well as the geotechnical and topographic surveys. And as far as funding for moving forward, bid documents, design, construction, et cetera, the primary funding source would surely be the Park Development Fund, which currently has just under $7 million available. Again, that's a general Park Development Fund, so council would need to direct staff to expend whatever portion of that on that, on this particular project. Additionally, there is the Measure H, which is a much smaller reserve available, and of course discretionary funding, such as the general fund. This park is not located in a lighting and landscape district.
Okay. And so of the $7 million that's in the Park Development Fund is, I'm sure that a good portion of that has already been allocated out for what's being done in our city now, such as development of parks. Could you explain?
Yeah, absolutely. Currently, this funding is not allocated. There are five-year capital plans, which includes right now, there was, this is prior to this conceptual design being developed, but there was $5 million allocated towards this particular project within that five-year capital. But that, again, is a discretionary. Council can give direction on that plan. But overall, that funding is not allocated. It's in reserve. And the city does anticipate additional funding coming into that. Impact fees are based off of residential development.
Okay. So when you say reserve, you're talking about the park development fees? Okay.
Yeah, the Park Development Fund account.
Okay. And do you have any idea what's in Measure H right now, or maybe our financial department knows? Or what part of Measure H could be allocated towards this?
Based upon the priority balance, there's about $1 million there. The other way to look at financing this is there's a certain runway within Measure H over probably another 10-year period that you could do a small 10-year debt issuance and tie the priorities, spending portion of that to that debt issuance that would make up the gap between what currently is sitting in the Park Development Fund and whether you use any of the discretionary funds to that to make this work. So there's other ways to look at this in terms of the overall financing of this park, and there are feasible revenues for acquiring a small bridge debt issuance to get this done. It would just, it would just take, you know, a set amount. This is the drop-dead amount that we're going to spend on this, and then we could backtrack into that. So the goal here would be to utilize those funds, or if we need to change the priorities of those funds, that might work. But there's a lot of different ways to look at this on that sales tax. And when we start looking at the Development Impact Fund itself, there are priorities built into that, too. But, you know, once we get an actual amount that we're looking to achieve that financing, we would then bring all of those forward to the council to address those spending priorities. But there are definitely ways to get this done with what the city currently is collecting in revenues and what's existing in cash.
So when you say changing priority funds, is that any particular fund that you're talking about?
Well, Measure H is a general spending. It's basically discretionary funds. We report it internally as its own fund, but we report it externally as general fund. So it's basically part of the discretionary fund. There was, I think, a resolution that was set up as far as the percentages on the spending priorities. I mean, part of it is there's some fiscal stability stuff that we might be able to reallocate predicated on, you know, where we are financially. There's a lot of things that we can bring to council in the future in terms of addressing the funding need for the park.
So based on all these possibilities of grants and different levels of funding within the city, is there some sort of anticipated build-out date for this particular park?
Again, it would really depend on discussion tonight, as well as if there are any future council presentations. The timeline for the project itself would be probably at least an eight-to-nine-month design process, and then probably an 18-month or so construction, given the size of the project. So looking at probably just over a two-year process, depending, again, when that process begins, based off of comments tonight and what might occur in the future.
Okay. Well, you know, this park is in my district. It's been in need of a renovation for a long time. But as a council person, you know, I want to make sure that we're not going to be financially strapped trying to do this process. And again, it's well-needed. It's a, the concept design is nice. But that would be my biggest concern, is to make sure that we're financially in a position of doing it and, you know, hopefully taking into consideration the grants that we could possibly get. That would help. But if not, then, you know, what's that next step? And so if we're not able to get those grants, then I would hope that staff would bring this back to council for additional decision on how we're going to move forward to complete the project.
So to your point, the grants, they're competitive grants, but they're also a matching component of these grants that make these grants easier to achieve. And the way we're looking at that is that, you know, the city is in a really good spot to match funds. To, I mean, the goal here is on, especially on the Major League Baseball one, it's between a 30% and 50% match that could potentially finance half of the project. So it really cuts how we look at this from a feasible standpoint, what we have cash on hand to say, "Look, we can present to you this plan with this cash match." And then from there, then back in and backfill anything that could still be missing here with current city revenues.
All right. Thank you.
Councilmember Goodyear?
Yeah. Colorado Parks, my favorite baseball field. I played there from the time I was three till 17 years old. I umpired there. I worked the snack bar. I kept score. Like I said, it's my favorite baseball field, but of all the baseball fields I've ever played on, through Little League, All-Stars, junior high, travel baseball, high school, it's quite possibly the worst field conditions I played on out of all the fields I've ever played on. And there's only, I mean, people did what they could to keep it up. I mean, but there's only so many potholes you could fill in the outfield and rocks you can pick up off the infield. And I know sports isn't necessarily the most important thing, but in this community, it's a large part of what our children have to do. We have, you know, nice basketball courts for the kids to play on for Parks and Rec, High School. Pacheco has nice basketball courts. Los Banos High School has awesome basketball courts, too. Football fields. We have an awesome football field at Pacheco High School. We're getting our awesome new field at Los Banos High School at Laughlin Stadium. But, you know, I played 20, 25 years ago, and that's the way I felt about the field then, and hasn't been. And driving by it now, it's like uninspiring. Like, for me, I would have played in the Walmart parking lot baseball. But for a kid that's on the fence, this isn't going to bring him out to the Little League field, looking at what we have now. So like I said, you know, Ms. Lewis and Councilmember Lewis and Councilmember Jones, you know, talking about money, and I hope we can make it happen, something like this, because it's, you know, it's long overdue. And I hope it can look something like this, because this is beautiful. I don't know much about skating, but I know our skate park's very small. I've seen many. Don't play tennis, but I'll only use that for playing baseball in it. But that needs to be upgraded, too. It's time to get something built, and it's going to take a lot of money, but our community deserves it. And I just hope we come to agreement or we get the money that we need and we make it happen. That's it. That's it.
Councilmember Lambert.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I probably echo a lot of things that everybody's already said, but it just shows that, you know, we have a lot of the skaters right here that come from the skate parks, it just shows that the skate park is important to them also. But we have a lot of baseball teams here in this town, and we have a lot of baseball fields. I've walked around, I've watched a few games in the last couple of years over here, and, you know, do we have to make a decision tonight whether to go ahead forward with possibly looking for those grants, correct?
No, but direction would be beneficial because, like, for example, MLB Youth Foundation Grant, that is a year-round grant, but the SPP grant that'll be coming up here in a few months, there is a deadline on that. And as part of those grants, typically we'll bring those forward as resolutions for council to approve. However, direction in terms of if this is a conceptual plan that city council has interest in, if there is additional comments that are evaluations that city council would like brought back to council for presentation, and generally speaking, the overall interest in a large investment in this park.
Okay. I know on these parks, these young'uns that I've seen out there, they started at age like four or five years old, I believe, maybe a little younger. And, you know, this means the world to them just to see something that's, just like Councilmember Gogonya was saying, he grew up with these parks. I feel that we'll find a way, one way or the other, even if we have to, and I'm sure if we don't get what we need, maybe there's some few minor adjustments that we may have to make, you know, to clean up. I'd like to see some solar panels out there that will run the whole system on the parking lot. Maybe that's something we could add later down the road, but if it's something that, you know, at least, let's get something for these young'uns that are our future for Los Bannos, you know, come up to play and, you know, have decent fields to play on. I know we've done the parks down on 7th Street, and, you know, I look forward to seeing what's going to happen to, over in my district, the Ag complex, those parks. But this one right here, like you said, this is the oldest park in Los Bannos, and, you know, let's, you know, I'm all for it, let's see where we can go to, you know, to get this thing started. Hopefully, we can act fast, you know, two-year process is a long time, but I know we got to start somewhere.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes, just clarification, on what we're approving to go forward on, is just for you guys to proceed, one, to look at grants, two, design, engineering, all that, right?
Yeah, it's direction. Yeah, I just wanted to bring this item for discussion from city council, this is not an item to vote on, it's purely to take input from city council in terms of this particular conceptual plan, as well as just improvements of the park in general, and the direction that we want to proceed as far as what staff should be seeking, grant funding, analysis of what funding sources might be available, as well as any alterations or anything else that we might want to look at in terms of either improving or changing the plan.
Okay. Well, I think we're all excited to see this happen, and, yeah, thank you for bringing it forward, and wish you luck on getting it done.
Thank you.
All right, so I guess I'll go last, or Councilmember Lewis, did you have one more thing?
I just wanted to give some input on this. You know, certainly, I would like to see us move forward with pursuing the conceptual plan, as we did with our police department when they came out with a plan of all the things that they wanted in the police department. At the end of the road, there had to be some modifications of things that were not included in. But in the future, as the city can afford it, and as our police department grows, those things can be added on. I would like to see staff start pursuing whatever grants are available as quickly as possible, because it kind of sounds like some of these grants that are available may be a little bit late in the game, but still have enough time to apply for them, especially since we have the financial backing to support matching money. And if that's a criteria for the state and other communities don't have the matching money, well, that gives us a better chance of being able to get those grants. I would also like to see, you know, occasional report back to council as to how this is progressing and where we are in it, rather than just leaving it here and depending on staff. You know, we depend on you to get these things going, but to report back to council to let us know how things are moving along with the project. So basically, that's my take on it. I would like to move forward with this, with the conceptual plan, and working with the, what is it? The Topography Site Survey. I'm sure there'll be things that are found there that maybe we don't know about, but right now, it's really important to get the applications in for those grants as quickly as possible, to see where we stand, and whether or not it's affordable to move forward with this plan that's set before us today. So that would be a motion. I know you want to make a last statement, but that's kind of, not a motion, but kind of a direction that I'd like to see.
All right, thank you. So I'm going to go a little bit different direction. I think this thing is long overdue. I attended, and I have a couple quick questions, I attended the opening ceremonies, and one thing that was at opening ceremonies that absolutely broke my heart is the young man who threw out the first pitch was in a wheelchair, and all I could think of is how we have failed him, that he had to negotiate rocks, and the family had to help him, and it just broke my heart to see that. So this needed to be fixed a long time ago. I am a little biased, I am a parent of a Little Leaguer, so I'm out there a lot, you know, taking pictures and whatnot, and yes, I agree with Councilmember Gogonya, this thing is just, it's far beyond repair, it really needs to start all over. So my two questions are, and I won't do it to our finance director who has eight days on the job, I guess I'll ask you, Brent, is if we do not get a grant, if we don't get a dollar in grants, is this a feasible project that we, as a city, can?
I think it is, yes. I do, it's just going to, it's going to take the finance department developing a financial plan and bringing it to council to show the feasibility. Of course, you know, the caveat is economic, macroeconomically dependent, but in terms of just how the structure of the current revenues exist, yes.
Okay. And also, too, just to bring the attention, is I know we're talking about Little League and, you know, the skateboarders, and I'd rather call you guys, you know, four-wheel endurance athletes, but I guess skateboarders is cool. You know, we have other youth groups that use this field, you know, the Wildcats and youth football, and there's other, you know, groups that come out and do this, so I think it's just a huge investment just in our community. My other question is, Joe, are you willing to take on a project of this size in your new role?
Yes, absolutely. This is, you know, one of the, when I moved here, I'm in year five and a half now, and Colorado stood out very early on, and say Pacheco Park is another location, those locations really stand out as community parks, as destination parks, as representatives of who we are as a community. So to me, this is nothing but excitement. Again, I didn't know the skateboarders were going to come tonight, but they've been there since day one, as far as, as long as I've been here, I barely have to say, "Come join us," and they're there en masse. Same thing with our Little League, and any community event or activity that I go to, I'm getting comments about this park, both the negative, which to me, I need to hear as well, and the positive of what it could be, and the hopes of what it could be. And so for me, you know, I am definitely obviously very passionate about parks and what, how they represent the community, and I think Los Bannos is a community that's just, is full of families and full of just that small-town care while still having these big menities starting to come to town. And I just, I look at something like this and what it can mean in terms of, you know, being prideful within the Central Valley, and in what other cities around us have in terms of, you know, all I hear is skateboarders driving to Oakdale. Well, I don't want to hear that anymore, I want to, they can go to Oakdale, but I want them to come to Los Bannos as well, and I want those that are here to be here, and I want the tournaments to be in Los Bannos, and I just look at that as the intrinsic benefits of what this project can bring to Los Bannos as a whole, and the identity that it can fit into as part of this community.
All right. Councilmember Lewis, do you have something else, or did I leave the light on? Okay. All right. I will say again, for further discussion with council, I think my, you know, my direction, I wholeheartedly agree with Councilmember Lewis, that, you know, confirming the financial feasibility of it, but I would also like to really just consider that we completely go for it, grant or not, I think it's an investment in our community. And so rather than, you know, put the hopes and dreams of kids that want to use this thing in two years, because that's what it's going to take, that we kind of commit and just go for it, if we can't afford it, just do it. You know, and the grants are the great byproduct, and so be it, you know, we'll take it, but that's, that would be, again, that would be my recommendation, so if council has any other discussion or any ideas to give direction, that would be my personal direction, but I'll leave it up to my colleagues here. I don't know, no? Okay.
Thank you.
All right, awesome, thank you. We will absolutely take some cheers now and then, I'm just saying. All right. Item nine, appointment of commissioners to the following commissions. We have Tree Commission, two vacancies, and two unexpired, two, two unexpired-year terms expiring December 31st, 2025. And so we have Abel Molina, I guess we'll do this individually?
You're nominating Abel Molina?
Correct. Do I have a, Councilmember Jones?
Second up.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right. And then we have a second person, Louis Castro? I'm sorry, Jones, Jones is the second. Do I have a nomination, Louis Castro?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Lambert? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right. Motion passes, thank you. Move on to item 10, advisement of public notices, we have no reports. Move on to item 11, City Manager Report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, council. First off, just want to give a big thank you to you councilmembers for us approving of this Colorado Ballpark. I, too, was out there this past Saturday. I, too, growing up, grew up going to that park over there at Colorado Ballpark, and many years ago, it was in just an unhealthy state, in a state of disrepair. I will tell you, skateboarders, I know we talk a lot about the baseball folks, Joe Heim, our director, does tell me a lot about you folks and your involvement, do know I really care about what you folks are doing, you know, and being involved with that. I actually, believe it or not, probably about four or five months ago, I went out to the skate park, I still have my rollerblades of when I was younger, and I wanted to see if I could still rollerblade, and I attempted, and I took a little video of me grinding on the first step, and I actually showed it to Parks and Rec Director Joe Heim, and he's like, "I don't believe that." And so I think I might still have the video on my phone, so I used to go out there often, I used to rollerblade all over town, I wasn't good, but I liked to have fun and rollerblade all over the place, so we're really excited to get that going for not only the folks that play baseball, for the folks that, you know, are out there skateboarding and having a good time, also for the, there's tennis courts out there, so folks do play tennis. So it is really a big regional park out there. As they mentioned, the Wildcat Football and other football programs are out there using this park, so it's really exciting to be able to get this park fixed for the community. At the end of the day, this is for the community, and 20-plus years ago, this park was not, you know, in healthy state, and I'm happy that we're doing that today, because at the end of the day, we're here to work hard for the people of the city. At the end of the day, some people may agree with what we're doing, and they may disagree with what we're doing, but we're going to do our very best and be as earnest and diligent as possible, and good stewards of the money to try to make things happen for the people of this town. On top of that, what's another thing that's very exciting about what we've done, is since we made the Parks and Rec Department its own department. So what a lot of folks may not know and understand is, prior to last year's budget, the Parks and Rec Department was falling under the Public Works Department. This council chose at their voting of the budget last, this last year, to decide to make the Parks and Rec Department its own department, and I'm really grateful, and I want to say thank you to all of you folks that voted for that, because by doing so, it has allowed Joe Heim and his team to be able to focus on the parks and focus on the things in this community for the kids, and that's extremely important. And some things I want to be proud of, and for folks to talk about, want to know what's going on. I get it, there's some things that you don't know, because you're just not aware, you're not involved. Every single citizen, every day, we wake up, we go to work, we put roof, we work hard to put a roof over our head, clothes on our back, and food on our table, that's our goal, that's our focus every single day, right? And we elect folks, and we elect our councilmembers, we elect our state senators, our representative, our congressman, to do the things that we expect them to do for the people. And I will tell you here today that we're working hard every single day to do the best thing that we can with the information that we have, and with the dollars that we have, to fight for the people of this town, and fight for the citizens of this town, to do whatever we can. We're not always going to get it right, we're not always going to be correct, but I promise you, we're going to fight like heck to make this the best place. This is my hometown, I grew up here, these are my people, you folks raised me, I rollerbladed all over this town, I've skateboarded all over this town, I've biked all over this town, I can drive in this town without a GPS, no problem, no way, shape, or form. I can remember the very first day, my first time around, I hopped in the car with Joe Heim almost two years ago, and as we're driving in the car, we, you know, we got to get to know each other, as we're driving around, Joe starts to tell me, "Turn here, turn there," and I looked at Joe, and I said, "Joe, I know where I'm going." And I'll never forget that time, but I'm really happy and proud of that, and not only on this Colorado Ballpark, I want folks to understand something that we've done for the youth of this town and for the people of this town. We've not only fixed, and we're going to work on Colorado Ballpark, and I promise you, we're going to work very hard to try to find a way to get it done, because I think TJ, I think Dustin Capresso, every single week, they're out there working hard to try to get that fixed. I was out there at Colorado Ballpark, there's potholes and craters in that parking lot, it's unacceptable. This is our home, this is our town, we're working hard, we care about this place, and I'm out there, I said, "This is crazy." And as a matter of fact, there was a fender bender accident out there on that weekend. Why? Because there's no lines painted in that. And so it frustrates me, the fact that we didn't address it before, but guess what? We're going to address it now, we're going to do whatever we can to make that happen. 7th Street Ballpark, the Powell Ballfields, folks, we got that all redone, all resotted, all regraffed, thank you, Joe Heim, to you and your team to get that done. The Ag Sports Complex, folks, we got a plan to get all that redone. I had a gentleman, a friend of mine, hit me up, he goes, "Josh, I was walking down the street the other weekend," he's, "Oh, man, I almost rolled my ankle, we got to get that park fixed out there, we got a bunch of gopher holes." I looked at him, I said, "I agree with you." I almost said his name, he knows who I'm talking about, but we're going to get that fixed, we're going to get that addressed. We also got pickleball courts that we're getting ready to get done, to get fixed out there, we have that project that we brought forward to the council. I'm super excited about the work that we're doing, we're just getting started on stuff, folks, but it takes time, we can't fix everything overnight, we don't have all the, always the answers, the solutions, but we're going to work hard every single day to get it done. Unfortunately, on some issues, our hands are tied, but we're working hard to try to come up with issues and address those things every single time, I assure you of that. I'm working many hours a week, our team is working many hours a week to try to get things fixed. Another thing we're real proud of, under the direction of Joe Heim and his team, we've cut over 400-plus trees in this city within the last few months alone. We've cut trees on H Street, I Street, J, K, L, M Street, Washington, Adams, Jefferson, Madison, California, Nevada, Arizona, Illinois, and guess what? We're not done. We also cut trees on the Canal Trail, we, Joe Heim today, hopped in the car, we drove the Canal Trail to look at the trees to get that done, we have other tree trimming work that's planned to get done. Parks that we painted, we painted the basketball parks at Rancho Basketball Park, we fixed it over there at Second Street Park, we went and did one over there off the Meadowlands Park, they did another one somewhere else, I can't remember off the top of my head, but we, Rancho Meadowlands, we've done one, we've done about six or seven new playgrounds last year. In a normal year, Joe, how many playgrounds do we normally do in a normal year? And how many did we do last year? Seven playgrounds, folks, that's more than 100% increase. Talk about a hand clap from the hard work of all those folks over there on the Parks and Rec side of things, we're getting things done, and we're making things happen, cutting over 400 trees. We also talk about paving of roads and things, we paved B Street, San Luis, Overland, Cardoza, Badger Flat, Berks, we did two road rehabs, it wasn't just putting slurry in there, we did two road rehabs, we did San Luis Street, and we also did Burke Street of road rehabs. We also did 50-plus curb ADA ramps improvements this last year alone, 50-plus, we've never done that amount, I don't think, in 15, 20-plus years. Councilmember Jones, Councilmember Lewis, you folks have been on this diet a long time, I don't think we've done that amount before. We also did the basketball courts on 7th Street. I'm really, really excited, and I'm proud of the work that the team has done, I'm proud of the efforts that we're making, I thank council for all of you folks and for your hard work, and for you allowing us to move forward to get these things done, we're working on the animal shelter, that animal shelter is long overdue, we brought a plan to you folks to get that done, that's another exciting thing that we've done. And all this work that I mentioned, we've got it done in a one-year's time period, folks, a one-year's time period that we got that work done. And here's the deal, we have a lot more work to do, it's going to take everybody's effort, everybody's ideas, every thought process to move forward. We can't get it all done in one day's time, we can't solve all the solutions today, but I assure you, we are working hard every single day to get that stuff done. Thank you, folks, for your hard work, thank you, council, for your support on all the efforts and the things that we bring forth to you folks, thank you.
All right. Moving on to item 12, report update, Rensselaer County Association of Governments, MCAG, Peninsula Clean Energy PC Measure V Committee, and San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District, and Los Bannos Downtown Property and Business Improvement District. And we'll start with Councilmember Lewis. And we'll start with Councilmember Lewis.
No report at this meeting tonight.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Jones?
Yes, Mayor. This past Sunday, we had our first annual St. Patrick's Day Beer Crawl, and it was a great turnout. For it being the first time, I was really impressed. I left out of there a little early, so I don't know what the late night was on it, but I hear everybody had a great time and hoping that we have it again for next year. And that is all.
All right. I have nothing for MCG. The meeting is scheduled for tomorrow, so I'll be in Merced tomorrow at the MCG meeting, and Peninsula Clean Energy meeting is coming up, so I have that. So we'll have more information after those things. So now we'll move on to item 13, city council member reports. Councilmember Jones?
No report, Mayor.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Lewis?
No report tonight.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Lambert?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Oh, go ahead.
That's okay.
I'm sorry. I forgot to look at my notes. I don't have a report, but I do have a couple of questions. We have our meeting tomorrow night for the San Joaquin Valley Air District, and tomorrow. And the one thing I can say, because it's on the agenda, is that the hundreds of thousands of dollars that we had set aside for the laser light shows, that went, I mean, that was snapped up very quickly. I left the information for the downtown association staff, but apparently, I don't know if they applied for or not, or if their grant wasn't accept, their application wasn't accepted because all the money was gone, but it went very, very quickly. I wish we could have gotten money for Los Banos, because it would have been a really nice opportunity to have a control laser show rather than just to see pyrotechnics go up in the sky. And as I've indicated before, I think CARBS is gonna be looking at whether or not they'll continue to allow pyrotechnics in the state of California. Illegal fireworks that come across the border from Nevada and across the ocean are illegal. It's just that the state doesn't do anything to enforce it. But I have seen some laser light shows online, and they're absolutely beautiful, absolutely beautiful, and very interesting, and you can design them in any way that you want to. So I'm really sorry that we missed out on that grant. And the other question I have is that it's getting close time for budgets for this year. Are we going to have any public workshops for budget this year?
We will be bringing the budget before council.
Okay. The question I have is for the public. We normally have public workshops for the public to have.
We'll be bringing the budget before council, and council will be able to discuss the budget, and folks will, here and the community will be able to be a part of that meeting, you know, we have available.
Okay. Normally, for the public to let you know what we have is we have public workshop budgets, and that is a separate workshop for the public to have input in on what the budget is going to be about. Now, the council is always there participating as well, but the public has input into it so they can express their desires about how the money's being spent, whether they would perhaps like to see money be spent versus, you know, what staff has outlined. So I'm hoping that we're going to have that public workshop budget so that the public can participate in how the tax dollars are being spent. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah. Quick question, Councilmember Lewis. How many, how many have we had, like?
We would have them every year. Usually, I think it's in the month of April.
Okay.
Because that gives staff a chance to work on the budget some more before it has to be finalized in, by, before June 30.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Councilmember Lambert?
Sorry. All right. Thank you. To all, thank Mr. Heim, great presentation on the Colorado Park. I think it's long overdue. Great job on that. Thank you to the staff that's actually worked well with that. I want to clarify a couple of things that were mentioned in the public comments, or public forum in my district. All three of my parks that are in my district have been renovated. Basketball courts, landscaping, and some lighting. So I just wanted to clarify that in the last year. And also, I think I helped with a couple of parks, get some vegetation cleaned off over and behind Target, correct? Okay. Other than that, I think the meeting went great today. Great, I'm happy about the Colorado Park. We're getting things going. I appreciate everybody. I appreciate the skate people, the skate kids that come up here. Definitely not a skater like anybody else, that's for sure. But appreciate it, and thank everyone for coming.
Councilmember Begonia?
No report.
All right. All right, I'll go last. So one thing that's recently happened, it's kind of been going after council meetings, is I get asked specific questions or have been requested to give comments on certain things that happen in the council meetings themselves, and I think the perfect opportunity is when I give my report. So first, I want to talk about just some accomplishments tonight, the things that have happened. I know our city manager touched on quite a few, but our community center was recently painted. It looks amazing, super happy about that. Tonight, we voted on a groundwater sustainability plan, which, if you know, water's everything, especially in the Central Valley. Airport runway lights definitely needed to be worked on. I'm glad we got that done. One thing we didn't touch on, it was in the consent agenda, is I just want to give thanks to Chief Reyna and Commander Melden. Tonight, we received an officer wellness grant for police officer mental health, and so that's a huge thing. And then the sidewalks on Seventh Street, the Noah Jones Park are gonna be put in. And so just, these are just some of the things that, again, I know we go through the motions and vote on them, but these are, these are some small victories. And then, of course, the Colorado ballpark, so I really, really want to see that go through. Another thing is addressing, like, public comments. I can't have a dialogue, obviously, and the city attorney tells me you want to, but you can't. People that come up, you know, to it, and I appreciate everybody's comment that comes up here. I'll be honest, I don't believe in uncomfortable conversations, probably just because I've been a cop a long time. But I do like the dialogue. I like people come up, and again, that's how I learn. That's how I learn to do this job. One thing that's consistently happened in the public forum I do want to address is Mr. Rubio has come in here, Graciello Rubio, has come in here several times to discuss the Small Business Assistant Grant Program, and I actually did quite a bit of research on this. And so I just want to share my views on Mr. Rubio coming in, and in no way do I want to dissuade him. If he wants to come in and give a presentation every council meeting, I encourage him to. I would love to have an actual dialogue with him, though, because I would love that, the opportunity for us to engage in dialogue. He's attended several council meetings, speaking at the public forum regarding the Small Business Assistance Grant Program. He's been identified as an owner or principal of a small business in town who received a grant. And again, based on the comments, he said, you know, not happy about how it was received and the scoring that went into that. Earlier meetings, he quoted a few sentences from an ARPA fund report that was given out. It's more than a 500-page document. So to quote certain things or, you know, to only list a couple of sentences in a 500-page document, it's hard to gauge a lot of information that way. Upon one of the first times that he came in here and spoke to a public forum, I actually sent him an email and said, hey, I have some clarifying questions. I'd like to get some information from you, and I never got anything back from him. I did follow up on social media. He does run one of the social media pages on Facebook, and so I attempted to reach out to him. I actually left my email and said, if anybody has any questions or wants to meet with me, I'm more than happy to. I did not get a response from him or anybody else. After doing some research on the business that, in general, that we're talking about, I learned that that business is a sole proprietorship. It's owned by one person, and that person is not Mr. Rubio. In fact, it's somebody completely different. And so by him coming here, again, and it was, I needed the clarification. I didn't feel like he was doing anything misleading. But again, he's not the owner of that business, and he's asking very specific financial information about somebody else's business. I did more research on this, and again, did things like searching business licenses, open records, the IRS, California Secretary of State's office, and I did confirm that that business is not owned by Mr. Rubio, nor has it ever been. Mr. Rubio does have his own business, and in fact, he has to file a form with the SEC.gov website in which he listed himself as an employee of this business from 2014 to 2017. And in the document that he filed as of January of this year, he states he's not an employee or does he have financial interest in that business. And so, again, very confusing for me when someone comes up here and is asking specific questions. So I will say this, that, again, I have no personal issues with Mr. Rubio. I think he's asking questions. However, I was told by staff that the Small Business Assistant Grant was done on a case-by-case basis. That was the only fair way to do it because of the varieties and types of business. So each one of those was evaluated individually. There wasn't a single scoring pool, there wasn't a, you know, anything like that. And so when you evaluate something on a case-by-case basis, the only way to kind of satisfy his request would be to give him personal and financial information of businesses he doesn't own. And so, again, when staff told me that, hey, this is why we have not shared that information with him, I completely agree. But I feel like the public should know that, right? I feel like that's something that you guys should know. I will say this, you know, just personally, that during the pandemic, I feel that gyms and gym owners were completely just done, done dirty. I'll be honest. And I wasn't in office, and I have no control over that, but that was just my personal[1578.38]